Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, July 23, 2024, 5:30 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dale Ray from the Lakeview Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Stacy Lee and the Echo Group Band of Brothers.
Join with me in prayer. Precious, gracious, heavenly Father, we come to the one who is the Lord of hosts, the one who is wonderful in council and excellent in guidance. I ask, Lord, that your blessing be upon this meeting tonight, upon our mayor, upon each of the council members, upon the leadership and government here, upon the police and the fire departments, upon all the agencies, Lord, we ask your blessing and we certainly ask your protection. We ask, Lord, that each will seek your will and that you will use them greatly in this community for the blessing of each and every resident of this town, I pray. I thank you for the place that you have given us to dwell in, and I ask humbly that each of us will be good stewards. Use us, I pray, Almighty God, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. If you are a veteran, we'll ask that you render a hand salute upon order. Band of Brothers. Present. Hump! I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. Stacy Lee, President of the Echo Band, Echo Group Band of Brothers. Did you want to share a little bit about your organization?
Sure.
Yeah, if you'd just make your way to the microphone so those at home can hear as well.
I'll hide behind the podium. I really don't need a microphone, but I know for...
For people at home.
This is of being online, we do. Hi, everybody. Good evening. It's good to see all of you. Echo Group Band of Brothers is made up of multiple facets. We are Echo Group. With that, we are Band of Brothers, which is our sports leagues, Hearts of Armor, which is our family support system, and Echo Group Riders, which is a motorcycle riding club. We are military veterans and active duty from all branches. We stand together, six branches, one family, with one mission, to end veteran suicide. Through our recreational sports programs, a healing takes hold as veterans become valuable team members again and have others to count on once more. Coupling that requirement to commit to their teammates as well as serving our communities, veterans begin to discover their purpose again. This combination has helped end isolation within our ranks, and we boast not one single suicide since our inception 11 years ago. We want to work with our local law enforcement to be on scene in a veteran crisis, to lend support to that veteran and provide an understanding that 93% of society cannot see. We are honored to do service for our community, like two recent large lake cleanups, which were the most fun I've ever had picking up trash, and assisting places like The Clothes Closet setting up for events. We've had many plans in place, partnering with the Havasu Community Health Foundation, Havassus, and many others. The veterans and my family members standing before you, you guys stand up for me, please, sorry. The veterans and family members standing before you all have a story, including myself. Stories of drug and alcohol abuse, legal troubles, PTSD, military sexual trauma, severe grief and loss of battle buddies, and numerous other things. However, the veterans and family members standing before you all have one thing in common today. They are still with us. They are healing. They have purpose, and most importantly, they have each other. We want our veterans to be able to participate in all aspects of what we do and concentrate on their own healing process. So we, as an organization, pay their fees to play sports, the jerseys they earn, and the events that we participate in. We are a nonprofit, and only you, our community, can help us continue our successful mission. We thank you for your time, your help, and the honor of allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy, and thank you for you all joining us today to give the pledge. We appreciate you. Next item is item four of the roll. Call Ms. Davis, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Jenny Coak.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cameron Moses.
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is the Consent Agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Campbell.
I would like to remove item 5.2 for further discussion.
Do we have a motion for the balance of the consent agenda?
Mayor, motion.
Please.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item 5.2.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? We are ready to vote. Oh, Councilmember Coak.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 5.2 is Adopt Resolution Number 24-3768, approving and authorizing execution of instruments necessary to vacate and convey parcel K, approximately 5,000 square feet of roadway located between lots five and six of Block 1, tract 2226, to the owner of adjacent lot 6. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you look on the overhead slide, let's get it up here. Can you see the slides on your monitors in front of you?
No, it's in the process of switching over, yes.
There we go. Okay, there we have it. If you look on the overhead slide, the general location of this property on Kiowa Boulevard North is shown on the overhead. And what it is, is it's a remnant parcel that, well, I call them remnant parcels, but there are these extraneous pieces that are left behind from the original plating of the tract. And those were intended, and I'll get to this in a moment with the Parking and Common Plan, those were intended to allow pedestrian access from the back where the parking was intended to be to the front of the property. And so I'm going to advance this one slide. This is the actual track map for 2226, and you'll notice it's parcel K. So it's an actual owned parcel. It's not a rideaway, it's not an alley. But the city has, over the years, been selling these off in this general area along Kiowa and also several along Maricopa in the South Gate area. And it's approximately 0.11 acres in size, and let me advance this one slide. The Parking and Common, as you can see at the top, this, from back in the 1990s, they didn't use a separate document for 2226, they just said same layout as for 2182. But the original Parking and Common had the parking in back, and then it got switched to where the parking was in front, adjacent to Kiowa Boulevard, which is the way it is today, for 75 feet. And then there's a 100-foot building area, then there's a 75-foot section at the back that was intended for mixed outdoor storage, additional building space, parking. And if you notice on the Parking and Common Plan, the Parking and Common extends across the remnant parcels, the really thin strips you see about a third of the way through from either side. So these are the strips that the city has been selling. This is another one of them, and whoever purchases it is going to have to add it into their parcel, and then it becomes part of their lot, and they have to also follow the Parking and Common with that strip. So because it's only 20 feet wide, there's limited use for these parcels. Only the two adjacent property owners on either side can benefit from it, and there's always an applicant that wants the piece, and then we always offer it to the other side individual. And in this case, the owner on the other side declined to purchase their half of it. So the offer was made for the whole 20 feet to the owner of the parcel, that's the applicant. I don't have anything else to add, Mr. Mayor. I'll answer any questions you may have. It's a fairly complicated process through closing and all that, but hope I tried to simplify the reasons why we're selling these over the years here.
Mr. Gilbert, are there any questions for Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, Mayor, if you go back to our Exhibit A that we had in our packet, if anybody has that, it didn't look anything like what you were presenting in front of me today. That's, I guess, councilmembers, if you would just go to your Exhibit A, you would see that. I was confused on was that an alleyway? It said called it a roadway. And once you've clarified it to me, this makes a really simple, this is an easy vote for me now, but at the time, it was, I didn't know if we were blocking off a roadway or not based on this exhibit. But thank you so much, I appreciate the update.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Gilbert for members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor.
Motion.
Yeah, I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-3768, approving and authorizing the execution of instruments necessary to vacate and convey parcel K, approximately 5,000 square feet of roadway located between lots five and six of Block 1, tract 2226, to the owner of adjacent lot 6.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coak.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 6.1 is to announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is the listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member and one alternate member. If anyone is interested in applying, they could pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.2 is our City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Knudsen.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Happy Tuesday. Start off this evening with the report welcoming Gabby Vera to Lake Havasu City. So Ms. Vera has started her new role with Lake Havasu City as our Parks Recreation Director and began just last week on Monday, and she's off to a great start. You'll quickly see when you meet her that her passion and her energy are infectious. Right now, she's touring all of our park amenities, meeting with the team, and learning about our programs and activities. So thanks, Gabby, welcome to the team. Our Veterans Treatment Court graduation was held on July 12th, and right here in the council chambers, the mayor, as well as Jeremiah Cota from Congressman Gosar's office, we had many councilmembers, city staff, were all in attendance, and it was a great day of celebration and support honoring our seven graduates and their families. The Veterans Treatment Court was established in November 2013. The objective of the court is to give veterans who faithfully serve their country a second chance by offering treatment for their substance abuse and mental health issues, which can often be traced to their service experiences. The following day, over 250 people attended the Ninth Annual Veterans Court Family Day, Mayor Nixon, Family Court Day, at the Relics and Rods Hall to continue the celebration. We had family involvement and as part of that celebration as well, which is very important for the recovery process for all, everybody going through the Veterans Treatment Court. Our Police Department hosted a swearing-in ceremony for several new officers, including Holada graduates Jonathan Jermaine, Nicola Silva, and Colm Cusack, as well as an opportunity to welcome our lateral officers that are now with Lake Havasu PD, and those include Derek McConnell and Casey Mon. Welcome to the team. Treasurer Ginger Sudden of our Lake Havasu Pickleball Association presented a check in the amount of $35,000 to our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board just this week, just yesterday. The donation will be used for lighting of some of the pickleball courts at the Mike Delaney Pickleball Complex at Dixamp Park. Lake Havasu City Pickleball Association once again stepped up with another donation to support the community and to prove the courts at Dixamp Park, and we are very, very grateful for all they do for the community and for that park. Over the weekend, on July 19th, there was a tragic traffic collision on SR 95. There was a single male driver that was struck by a burrow crossing the road. Initially, his injuries were not considered life-threatening, but very, very sadly, he later passed away, and our thoughts and prayers go out to the family. We've seen a significant increase in burrows crossing Highway 95, creating dangerous situations. Just in the last 12 months, the PD has responded to about 80 calls for burrows on the highway, with most occurring very recently. Additionally, over that same time period, there have been four traffic accidents that have involved burrows. In response, under the leadership of Chief Sterling, we are asking BLM for help. Our Lake Havasu City, we reached out to BLM to request another roundup, as the last one was done about two years ago. The roundup would allow for the safe and ethical capture of burrows in the area and, of course, reduce the number of accidents along our highway. We're very hopeful and eager to hear back from BLM, and hopefully we can get that done and accomplished very, very soon. And lastly, one final reminder, at least for the primary election, it'll be held one week from today, that'll take place on July 30th, for the purpose of calling, or, excuse me, for the purpose of electing three councilmembers. Early voting started several weeks ago, and the last day for early voting is going to be on July 26th, and that'll be located at the Mojave County Library. And for additional information, contact the Clerk's Office here at Lake Havasu City for this election in particular at 928-453-4142. And with that, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. Move on to item seven, our public hearings. During each of our public hearings, we will have a public discussion. We ask that if you have any comments, to just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record, and then just address the city council on the items that you may have. At the conclusion of our public hearings, there will be a call to the public where you'll have an opportunity to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City, but we won't be able to have a two-way conversation during that time. So if you're here for one of those items, we ask that you use that time when the public hearing is in front of us. So we'll start with item 7.1, which is Approve Payment of Mojave County Water Authority Membership Dues for Fiscal Year 2425. Mr. Kellit.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's an honor to be here in regard to the Mojave County Water Authority. The Water Authority has been around for quite a long time, almost 20 years at this point. Actually, I'm sorry, almost 30 years at this point originally, 1995, and was brought to light to protect water rights within Mojave County and has done an excellent job over the past 30 years, basically securing over 15,000 acre feet for the county itself and almost 10,000 acre feet for the city of Lake Havasu directly. It has continued to be a beacon of water rights for our community directly and for the entire county. So they function in a very interesting role because they are essentially a paper water agency where they have rights to water but have no way to move it. So all they really do is protect us and our water rights throughout the state. So the federal government and the state government is making changes, the Mojave County Water Authority is there, kind of like standing up for us and being our representative. To the day, they still participate in both federal and state lobbying and participate in all Arizona Department of Water Reviews for the upcoming change to the Colorado River rules. So as you may or may not be aware, in 2026, the rules for the river operation are subject to change. The agreement between the federal government and the states is going to change. Mojave County Water Authority is playing an active role in how those water rights will be dealt with in the future, and really how river operations are going to be held in the future, and making sure that all of its agencies are protected. And those agencies include the city of Bullhead, city of Kingman, the Mojave Valley Irrigation District, Golden Shores Water District, Mojave Water Conservation District, Mojave County itself, and of course, Lake Havasu City. And to the end, as far as Lake Havasu City itself being involved, as you may or may not know, the mayor is the chairman of the Mojave County Water Authority, and I serve as the technical advisor. So we are very active in this particular group, and it is a very good value that we get for this amount. So with that, we are asking for approval for the annual dues of $53,970 for this fiscal year. And with that, I can take any questions.
Mr. Kellit, are there any questions from members of the council?
Mayor.
Councilmember Campbell.
I had this question the other day. I was wondering, do you know how many acre feet that we are using currently?
So right now, we're going to be targeting somewhere in the neighborhood of around 14,000 acre feet this particular year is about where we're going to land.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Kellit for members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
What is the membership contract? It says online, it says that there's a membership dues invoice, but it doesn't show what the membership contract is. So I was just kind of curious what the contract is and what you're paying the membership dues for.
So it's for one year. So it'd be for this fiscal year, which would be July 1 through June 30. There's not a contract of dues. We would pay our membership dues for this one year, and then next year, we would consider the dues at that time. So it's for one year, and that money goes towards the operation of the organization to secure and protect water entitlements and water rights along the Colorado River for the members of the authority.
Does each city pay different amount, or do they all pay the same?
Each pays a little bit different based on the number of acre feet of water that the authority is contracted for, for that community. So we're one of the larger members because we have one of the larger allocations of
How come that's not like in a contract form of that? You agreed to a membership. Usually, like if I join Planet Fitness, I'm signing up for a yearly membership or a monthly membership, there's a huge contract that says you do this, you do that, they do this, they do that. It would be where I would be able to read it when I wanted to. That's not the case with your membership dues to the Water Authority. I was curious as to what information would be.
Yeah, so today, we're considering the membership dues for the organization, so the contract for each of the water entitlements that's held is a separate contract that is available on the city's website, if you'd like to look at that.
Where at on the city's website? It was not attached to the agenda.
That's because we're not considering that this evening. We're just talking about the membership dues. So you can do a search on the city website, and that information will come. If you have any other challenges, feel free to reach out to my office, and I'll help you out.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Moses.
Yeah, motion.
Please.
I move to approve the expenditure of $53,970 for fiscal year 2024 through 25 to the Mojave County Water Authority to continue the city's membership with the organization.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coak.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item is 7.2, Approve the Purchase of Two Honda CRF 1100 L4R Africa Twin Adventure Sport Motorcycles from Huntington Beach Honda. Chief Sterling.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, please approve. No, all right. A little bit more, all right. So we're asking tonight for the approval to purchase two Honda African Twin Adventure Sport motorcycles from Huntington Beach Honda. This is the CRF 1100 platform. Currently, the Police Department has two 2015 ST 1300 motorcycles, which are assigned to our traffic unit, and due to their age and mileage, and of course, that platform is no longer being manufactured, so the parts are becoming increasingly difficult to obtain. This went out for bid, and the sole bidder was Huntington Beach Honda, which we are happy with that because they're the ones that build this platform specifically for law enforcement. Redondo Beach is one of the agencies that's been using this platform since 2018, and they've been very pleased with the platform. Other brands and models were considered when searching for a replacement. Unfortunately, most of those brands would require us taking them several hours away for maintenance services, where we have a Honda dealership in Parker, so it would be much closer for us. The Adventure Sport platform also allows for certain advantages for law enforcement purposes that the other platform did not. Some of those include lighter weight, more nimble, making it easier to make tighter turns, maneuvering through traffic, 300 pounds lighter is quite a big difference. The higher ground clearance, allowing the riders to traverse curbs, stairs, other obstacles. And this is a dual-sport platform, and so that allows for different types of terrain, such as better mobility when covering special events, park patrols, and beach access. So a little different platform than what we're used to, but we're very happy with the direction of it. So for, what we're asking for is we appropriated for this purchase in the Police Department's fiscal year 2425 capital outlay budget utilizing the Smart and Safe Act, Arizona Act funding, which is commonly known as Prop 207, and so that's allocated in the budget, and ask for your approval tonight not to exceed the amount of $59,248.40 plus applicable taxes to Huntington Beach Honda. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions for members of the council or the chief? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
I have this really weird question. Bonnie.
Yeah, could you pull that? Thank you.
Hey, Bonnie Toy, just a really weird question. When somebody buys a vehicle from out of state and then they bring it back into Arizona, they have to pay extra taxes? And I was just wondering if that was going to happen here, or how much that extra, when would that be on there?
Chief, do you have the answer to?
Bonnie, you stumped me tonight. All right. That is a procurement question, but we will pay the applicable taxes. We already gear for that as part of that process, though. All right. Good question.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan.
Motion.
Please.
I move to approve the purchase of two Honda CRF 1100 L4R Africa Twin Adventure Sport motorcycles from Huntington Beach Honda in the amount of $59,248.40 plus applicable taxes.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? We're ready to vote. Councilmember Coak.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Chief. Next item is item 7.3, is Approve the Professional Services Agreement with Tank Industry Consultants, Inc., for the North Havasu Additional Tank and Distribution Line Project. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's good to be here tonight to talk about water. I'm here tonight to recommend approval of professional services with Tank Industry Consultants for the North Havasu Additional Tank and Distribution Line Project. Put together a brief PowerPoint for you to see. For those of you that might not know, we do have a tank reservoir site that is on the north side of town, up by the airport. Can you hear me okay? It currently is a 2 million gallon reservoir tank, and it is the only tank there at the site. A little bit closer insight, look at that particular site, you can access it off of the city road there, and surrounded by a fence and has a pump station. This particular project will be a design contract to design a 750,000 gallon steel welded tank that will be sitting adjacent to the current 2 million gallon tank. It will incorporate some distribution line as well. The purpose of this new tank is, we have recognized for a while that this 2 million gallon tank that was built in 2001 is in need of some maintenance, but we really have no way to adequately do the maintenance on it. So we hired Jacobs Engineering Group to come in and do a study on what type of tank we would need, I mean, excuse me, what size of... tank we would need, I mean, excuse me, what size of tank we would need if we needed it, and then what size would they recommend. So, they came along, and really, the, the key factor here is the, the ability to fight fire flow. So, with Home Depot up there and such, they were able to calculate that we would need about 750,000 gallons available at all times to be able to, it's actually more. It's, we're taking in consideration the distribution line amount as well. I think it's closer to, to, to 300, 3, 3 million, somewhere in there. But this is a tank that's being recommended, and we have reached out to Tank Industry Consultants. So, the scope includes performing a topographic survey of the site, the design of the grading and drainage plan, the design of a 750,000 gallon welded steel ground storage tank that will sit adjacent to this existing 2 million welded steel storage tank and piping layout. Project schedule is six months. The anticipated design completion is February of 2025, upon which we'll have plans and specs, and we will be going out to bid for this tank. Contract itself costs approximately $74,480, which we have negotiated with the consultant and feel is fair and reasonable. I can take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions, members of the council, for Mr. Hart on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan?
Just to clarify, once we get the new tank, then we'll be able to service the other tank? Or are they going to pull the other tank out of service because it won't be needed at that point?
No, it will still be needed, but we'll be able to service it.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to address, or would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing them, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion.
Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve the professional service agreement with Tank Industry Consultants, Inc. for the North Havasu Additional Tank and Distribution Line Project in the amount of $74,480.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, and a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing them, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Our final public hearing of the evening is item 7.4 is to award bid for the construction of the 2024 Water Main Replacement Phase One Project to Pronghorn Services LLC. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's good to, again, to be up here awarding a water main replacement project, which is very much a worthy project to be moving forward with. This is the 2024 Water Main Replacement Project Phase One, in which I am recommending we award a construction contract for the project. For those of you that might not be familiar, this project consists of replacing water main in 17 different streets. These locations in particular have been identified as critical areas that we have experienced a decent amount of breaks and which generates overtime and, and a lot of things going on that, that we, that needed to be addressed. When we're looking at replacing our water mains, there's some key criteria that we look at. One is diameter. We have a lot of older existing four inch main that we want to upgrade to six inch. We also have mains out there that have older material, the ACP and such. And then, the type of pressure, as you are aware, our city has seven boundary zones. If you're at the top of the boundary, you're probably at about 60 PSI. If you're at the bottom, you're probably at about 120. So, if there's these particular streets, if they're located at the bottom of the zone, there's high pressure, which would make them that much more critical. And then their break history, as we're reviewing the, the, how often our crews are called out with the problem areas that, that we have seen out there and such. And then again, the age of the pipes. A lot of these pipes that we're replacing right now are 40 years old and have served well that are needing to be replaced. So, the project schedule is 150 calendar days, five months. The anticipated completion will be in February of 2025. The engineer's estimate base bid was at $2,891,760. We received four bids when we went out and advertised. The first bid was from Pronghorn Services LLC, a base bid of $3,210,086. The second bid that we received was from B4 Enterprises Incorporated. That was for $3,291,285.50. Premier Baco, they came in at $3,448,039, $39.04. And then we had Oliver Industries come in at $3,893,797. As we were comparing our engineer's estimate to the apparent little bid, we recognized that there was a few areas that they were a little bit higher, such as mobilization and some of the materials costs that had gone up. And we feel that it's still a reasonable bid for this project. We reckon, I recommend the award for the base bid of the construction of the 2024 Water Main Replacement Project Phase One to Pronghorn Services LLC in the amount of $3,210,086. And I can take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions from members of the council, from Mr. Hart? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. Mr. Hart, could you go back? And it's not really a question. It's just something that I wanted to point out to the first slide you had that showed all the streets and what streets are going to be on there. That one right there. Perfect. Thank you. So, one of the things I wanted to bring up was, we talk about our water rates and what we do with the, the monies that come in from that, and that this is an enterprise fund. And that's the monies that we use to fix our infrastructure. If you look at every single line on there, they all have water mains. Every single house here in the city has these water mains. And for $3 million, this is what we're going to be able to fix. So, every year, we have to do more and with less, and we have to maintain the system. Not only so we have the water, but for the fire hydrants as well, so that if there is a catastrophic incident, our fire department is able to access that. I just kind of wanted to put it into perspective, the streets that we're going to be able to fix this year for a little over $3 million, and how small of an amount that is for the amount of water mains that we actually have in the city. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lane.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane.
Um, Mr. Hart, can you remind us how many phases we're going to be going through?
Yes, when we originally went out to bid, there was two phases we were looking at. The first phase was this one, which is roughly 9,400 feet. The second phase was, was quite larger at 23,000 lineal feet, which we subsequently broke up into two phases. So, the second phase will be 11,000 approximately, and then the third phase will be 11,000 as well. Those, we're getting design contracts, the plans and specs just wrapping up, and there'll probably be a year or so before we come before you with those.
So, I, I, I think my question is, since we're doing this in phases, we probably will be using the same company? Are we going to, are we going to have to go through the same bidding project for each phase?
Yeah, that's a good question. And yes, we will have to go back out to bids. And, you know, things change for companies. Sometimes they're really busy in other parts of the state working, and there are some that have the ability to, to move equipment easier. So, it's kind of worth our while to go back out and, and get a new bids each time.
And then I think my next question is, with doing that and switching companies, in the long haul of looking at everything, if we have different agencies doing different scopes of work, I'm trying to say, um, yeah, yeah, well, I guess when we look at the whole system as a whole, is that going to be, are they going to be consistent?
Yes, that's, that's a fair, that's a good question. We, the city has our standard specifications, which spell out a lot of our requirements. We have our standard details in which we require, you know, certain materials, certain connections. So, we have standards set in place so that there is consistency. The, the C, the PVC 900 is our standard pipe for this, and so we'll be seeing that as well. And it's high, it's high quality regardless of whatever contractor we get. We do hold them to that standard.
Thank you. I was just looking at the future, and if there was issues or problems, and we wouldn't have to go back and ask the different organizations that did the work, and then our staff would know how to look at these repairs and everything in the future.
Yes. And then for each project that we have, once we've issued substantial completion, which means that all the work is done and in operation, and there are punch list items, the one-year warranty starts. And so, we monitor for a whole year. And if any issues come up, the contractor has to come back and address those warranty issues. And, and so far, we've been pretty fortunate to have the good quality that we don't really see that much.
Are there any additional questions from members of the council? Councilmember Dolan?
Mr. Mayor, so when do Phase Two and Phase Three, which budgets are they in? Are they seeding years, or is it something we can line up after this one, you know, if they're already in town and things like that? Or is it the next fiscal year and the following fiscal year?
If, if, as you're aware, in our CIP budget, the line item for, in the water, for the Water Main Replacement Program, I believe is 5.7 million. And this particular project's going to eat up 3.3 with the CM contract with Trico that was approved. And that leaves X amount of dollars available, but we're utilizing those dollars this year to address water main replacements that are falling within some of our pavement projects. So, the good news is, we're replacing water mains all throughout this particular Phase Two and Phase Three. Because of that, will need to, to be held off for the next fiscal year, and possibly the next, depending upon budgets, because they are larger, a little bit larger projects.
Are there any additional questions? All right, this is a public, oh, Mr. Knutson?
I can just kind of add to it a little bit, too. So, we have, as far as phasing, how much water mains can we do? And I think a lot of that sentiment is coming back, like, let's do more. We have about $3 million that we program each year for, for water mains. And then in addition to that, if, again, Mr. Hart was indicating that if we have a, a road project, the rule of thumb is we look at about 50% of the, the road project that we pay for asphalt, about we pay, so if it's a $5 million, which, which the council approved, and additional investment into our streets and roads and pavement preservation for the, this, this existing fiscal year, we had to add $2.5 million to the budget for water main replacement, because we want to make sure that the mains are replaced before we put the asphalt on, on top. So, we do about $3 million a year, and then we look at making sure that there's an investment, further investment in addition to what you'll see in our, in our HERF fund and what's in our, our water fund as well, too. So, we're always looking for additional funds for either from grants, or as we were on the MPO call earlier today, and we have some work we're doing with Artac on that effort. So, if funds are available at the state, we're going to be asking for some pavement projects, as well as some utility projects on top of that, too. But I just want to kind of make, make it clear that we have about $3 million a year is what we have, what we spend on water mains. And then if council chooses to take our unencumbered funds and invest in roads and utilities, then we can do a little bit more. But we have a lot of water mains, a lot of roads, a lot of sewer, sewer mains, and sewer lines and laterals all throughout the community. And we're doing our best to try to tackle the worst first and then keep on going. So, this is an ongoing effort each and every year. So, thank you, Mr. Hart. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any additional? Okay. Yes. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing them, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion.
Councilmember Lane?
I move to award the base bid for the construction of the 2024 Water Main Replacement Project Phase One to Pronghorn Services LLC in the amount of $3,210,086.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing them, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item eight on our agenda is our call to the public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. There will be a light indicator box on the screens that will show the time. You'll have three minutes. The time will turn to yellow when your time is getting near, and red when your three minutes is up. The council can't have a two-way conversation during this part of the meeting, but we can listen intently to whatever comments you may have or provide, and, and go from there. We ask again that you just address the city council. You don't have to sign up for Call to the Public. And Ms. Davis, do we have anyone sign up?
We had somebody sign up, but he didn't indicate which public hearing item. Okay.
Perfect. If you want to make your way up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the Havasu community, I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Andrew Myers. I work with a company called Sustainability Partners. We are a public benefit company. We provide low-cost funding for public infrastructure projects. And I've been on a tour kind of through the tri-state area today. Was in Kingman this morning. I was with the Fort Mojave Fire District immediately before this, and then had the opportunity to come and speak to you. I feel like it was kind of kismet, though, that you're talking about your, your water project tonight, because these are the kind of things that we engage in, allowing communities to be able to escape that chicken and the egg situation of having critical infrastructure projects that need to be addressed. Addressing them today would be the most cost-effective way to do it, but unfortunately, the resources, either in general fund dollars or bonding capacity, doesn't exist. So, we have a novel model. The way that we work is, we fund 100% of project costs, including design, engineering, you know, equipment, the cost of capital, et cetera. And then we structure that as a utility use agreement. So, it's off-balance sheet. It's an ongoing month-to-month agreement that allows you to pay for infrastructure as you go. And it has an attached maintenance fund. So, we, as a company, take on that maintenance responsibility to make sure that we're delivering a service to you. So, feasibly, we could be able to attack your water main issue as one complete project, instead of doing it in phases where, to your point, Councilmember Lynn, there's inefficiencies related to that. Being able to work with one contractor, to be able to do the project in one phase, is the right way to go. You know, the engineering idea is buy it once, buy it forever. But unfortunately, because of the requirements of municipal finance, that's not able to be done. So, for us, it's about getting you, because we're, we're a cost-plus business. We don't mark up equipment. We don't mark up capital. We make 80 basis points as a management fee over the top of it. So, for you, it's, it's about getting you the lowest cost of ownership over time. So, looking at how can we extend the useful life of these assets, because we know that buying the $8 light bulb might last twice as long as buying the $7 light bulb, but because we need to go with low bid, that's, you know, the situation that we end up in, kind of this value engineering trap. So, we exist to allow you to escape that. We've done about $1 billion in projects nationwide, but we're just now rolling out our program here in Arizona, which is why you may or may not have heard of us. But we're working with a couple of dozen communities already across the state to be able to move forward their critical infrastructure projects, water, wastewater, workforce housing, rolling stock for vehicles, things like that. So, I, sorry for going around you, Mr. Manager. I hope you don't mind. Oh, do you? I apologize. But I would really be appreciative to be able to get a conversation started. We were just in the neighborhood here tonight, so I'm stopping by. So, I apologize for stepping on your toes if, if that's the case. But thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it. And we would love to be of service to your community moving forward. So, thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public?
Hello, it's Bonnie Toy. Hey, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I am, and council. Or maybe this is being addressed to the city manager. But I was scrolling through Facebook this morning, and I saw this really cool post for Sedona. They have their new trans, transit system. And their new transit system is just like ours, which is really cool, except their hours are completely different and geared toward their tourists. And I thought that they're ours because they go from Thursday to Monday, or something like that. It's on their, one of the Facebook's websites. And it's from 6:30 PM to 6:00 PM, Thursday through Sunday. And it's only $2 and a dollar. If you're, it's a dollar if you're handicapped, and $2 if you're not handicapped or disabled or a senior. That, that was a really fair price. And the whole idea that it was kind of geared toward the tourists, like, I want to go there for the weekend, use their tur, their thing, except I don't like the app. Anyway, I just wanted to make that recommendation. You might want to look at your, see how it can be, something like that could be included into our system, so it helps the tourists. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? All right, seeing them, we'll go ahead and close the Call to the Public. Item nine on our agenda is current events. Are there any council committee reports?
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell? Yeah, councilmember Campbell.
I just left the Chamber of Commerce and I want to say we have some interesting events coming up first and foremost. The building industry is growing. They will be having another meeting on August 6th at 4:00 PM. Any contractors out there that remember the old Colorado River Building Association, the camaraderie that they have there, I would highly recommend you pick up the phone and give Chamber of Commerce a call and dig into that a little bit deeper because they are really doing great things. One of the great things that they're doing is on November 8th and 9th is the Havasu Home Show plus the Food Truck Show. I think that was really brilliant that they took the food truck festival and they combined it with the home show festival, making it a, a really good opportunity for everyone. So again, if you are a contractor, you know of anybody that is a contractor that would like to have more networking and collaboration with contractors, I recommend you go that, get up and give the chamber a call. Also, the Winter Fest registration, registration ends this month. So if you're interested in being a part of the Winter Fest, then make sure you get ahold of the chamber today or by the end of the month. Desert Bash will be December 6th and 7th. We moved it up or back a week. I can't remember because we had the same weekend as the boat show and they thought that was not a good idea. So good things happening in the chamber. If it's kind of revamped itself into, under the new leadership of Andrea Healart, obviously when you bring new leadership in, things change and a lot of excitement is happening because of that. So pick up the phone, get ahold of the chamber if you're a business or a contractor. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other council committee reports?
I, I have another.
Okay.
I was at the RTAC meeting yesterday, which is the Rural Transportation Havasi Council in Phoenix. I had the opportunity working with Director Toth from ADOT and several people from our boards and commissions, exciting stuff coming our way. We have a very unified board on RTAC, which means that are working towards trying to increase funding for our roads and infrastructure. And why you saw me looking at just their first second is, you know, here in Lake Havasu City, we may have an appropriation bill of nearly $17,000, $17 million. They told us to find some projects. Obviously, broken pipes and roads are, fall within that jurisdiction. So good, exciting stuff there. Our summit will be in October and it's probably going to be one of our biggest rural transportation summits that we've had and it is our 25 years. So exciting stuff happening there with legislation and there you go.
Thank you. Yeah, councilmember Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just real quick, Parks and Rec. Last night we had our Parks and Recreation Committee meeting. As Mr. Knutson had in his report, the Pickleball Association donated $35,000 to the city for lighting up of those courts. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things with that. One, it just goes to show what happens with a partnership when we have an organization that isn't just coming to the city asking us to do things, but actually putting some boots on the ground and earning some, some dollars that, where we can work together and bring in the amenities that they want. It was also Ms. Vera's first Parks and Rec meeting is our new Parks and Recs Director. And we had a new board member that was there last night as well. And it was Mr. Kozlowski's last as the interim director after Mr. Keen left and before Ms. Vera got here. Anthony filled in and did a great job. We really appreciate all the, the work, Anthony, that, that you put forward for the Parks and Rec and we welcome Ms. Vera and we expect good things from her. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other council committee reports? All right, item 10, our future meetings. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, August 13th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. It's a regular meeting. So you're welcome for a shorter meeting today, but we're going to pay for it on August 13th. So bring lots of water for that meeting. Item 11, future discussion items. Are there any future discussion items? Item 12, a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thanks for being here. Be kind. We'll see you next time.